Yeah.
There's no reason to beat the dead horse.
Hey.
I thought about this.
It's a different.
In all right, on one, but.
And use it and then Jacob's plan.
Right.
He's looking for a gift, yeah?
Fine for a gift.
Yeah.
Were you up in Juneau County?
I was.
We had more storm there than.
Probably did.
We had, because I was. Excited while I was setting a bear trap and I don't know. So that's all metal. The tall tower for the. Standing around a metal trailer and I was not that excited, so I went in the truck.
Do you mean some of the weather?
I am. Because it just kept throwing developing. And then I got home and it wasn't bad here and it just.
You said I like twenty three?
When I was in.
Chopping, chopping.
Lightningers.
There were a lot of them.
See what we've been talking about. Later in the year and that's all.
I know you've lived here.
I don't know if that's worse or better, because sometimes I wonder if you're the only. All right, we will call me in order. If everyone could surround all the women, please step or seat all the way forward as far as the council, the zoom might fix you up. Frye?
Here.
Brunchard?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Gargano?
Here.
Kenny? Eric? Friends?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Knudsen?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council received information on non-agenda topics roughly for the consummate members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of them at this meeting. Is there anyone who's on the agenda which we. We will go to consent agenda, one motion approves all consent items. Number one, approve minutes for the meeting held on May twenty third, twenty twenty two. Number two, approved deny May twenty two paid bills. Number three, receive May twenty twenty two building permit report. Number four, approve deny my oral appointment of Nancy Phelan to the zoning board of appeals. Number five, approve deny sanitational licenses for twenty twenty two through twenty twenty five. And number six, approve deny twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three retail alcoholic beverage and cigarette licensing. Questions on the consent or I'll take a motion?
Show move.
Motion by Gargano?
Second.
Seconded by Frye. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I know general business, we have a few items for the evening, the first one is approved deny second reading in public hearing on ordinance nineteen forty dash twenty two. Amending chapter twenty one to permit the appointment of the city clerk to the board review. Jake?
So if we talked about this at the last meeting, this would make one of the members of the board review the clerk. We talked with the assessor Dean and it seems like about fifty percent of the participants have the clerk. Um, the other half do not, so it's kind of up in the air. Um, the reason we wanted to do this aside from just having like a, uh, someone who's familiar with taxes on the board is. Um, there's a new requirement that someone has to be certified every year that's on the board review regardless of if there's anything on the agenda. And so since I'm already trained to do that on a yearly basis, we thought it would make the most sense to put me down there. For the clerk, good job.
Any questions for Jake?
Jacob, do you have to be recertified every year then?
Yeah, it's part of the training that we do through the clerks association.
Okay.
So it's built in already as opposed to bringing people in from UW extension to train the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
On that, Jake, they still will train though, correct?
Yeah, yep, they'll still train, they'll do um, a DVD from the extension, they just won't have to turn in the certificate to DOR on a yearly basis.
Any other questions before I take public hearing? I will take up the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty dash twenty two? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty dash twenty two? Final call, anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty dash twenty two? Hearing now, I'll take it back to the council, discussion, I'll take a motion of ones in order.
Your honor?
Yes.
I would reiterate what I said when it was introduced is that. Um, I am not personally opposed to the, to the clerk being permitted to be appointed. But at this time, I don't believe there is a vacancy on the board review, I think it's full as of this evening. Is that correct?
It is.
Yes. Um. And as I stated before, it's a quasi jury, it's made up of the public. Um, and perception does matter. If we don't have the need to appoint, then, as I said, I'm not opposed to having the ability to do it. But I'm not so sure that we should. Um. That being said, um. When a member of the public comes into a board of review, for those of you that you have not sat on a board of review. Dean Peters, who was our representative, is there representing us. Um, and it's a daunting task for a citizen to actually prove at that point that there's something wrong. That there's something amiss, they have the chance to meet with, with the assessor usually. Almost in every case beforehand and the assessor does their best to, to try to come to a resolution. But when that doesn't happen, it goes to the board of review and the board of review is made up entirely of citizens. So when the citizen comes in and they look at that board, when there's a member of. The city government, city not as a voting member of that board, it. The perception is that there's a vote in favor of the city from the word go. And that doesn't make a. Uh, non-biased jury, that, that creates a biased jury. Um. And it's because of that perception, that, that moral. Issue. That, uh. I'm concerned about doing so. Just because we can doesn't mean we always should. Um, I do like the idea of it, when we get into a situation that we can. But as I said, I don't know that just because we can't means that we should. And I'll just leave it with that.
Anyone else? For a discussion? Comments?
Just a, just a quick clarification, so the. So we do pay Dean.
Right.
To do our assessing, but Dean is an independent third party, just like Baker Tilly is an independent third party who does our auditing. Uh, we have absolutely no control over Dean, Dean assesses on his own as a third party. Um, the reason that, and I listened to Dave the last, at the last meeting, I had some time to think about it, it's, um. You know, we're a stakeholder in that whole situation. We have something to lose as well, when, when Dean does his negotiations and does his assessments. So it would be nice for us to have a voice that has at least a vote behind it. Or has the ability to make or second a motion that happens. Um, rarely do I see anything, much like here where there's anything contentious about those things, but it's just nice to have that. I did have an opportunity to talk to Dean today and, um. Jacob had said he's about fifty fifty with different communities that do this kind of thing. Um, he prefers, um, a more professional. At least voice that's familiar with development, that's familiar with taxation, that is our subject matter expert, much like, um, Steve. When Steve sits on plan commission, as a voting member of plan commission, so we kind of likened it to that. Um, he likes to have that kind of, uh, I guess professional backup when he has these conversations or these hearings. And I think that, um, I think citizen members would appreciate that as well, having that type of input from a professional staff member. More than just advisory, because we do have kind of a dog in this fight as well. Just for your consideration.
Anyone else?
Do we have a plan for addressing that it's already full?
Oh, we do, I mean, it's, so board review is much like a lot of our other committees where. People are serving as a favor to either you guys or to me or to Jacob, so there's always, you know, hey, do you really need me this year? You know, when the renewals come up, so there probably be room for him, um, at the next renewal, I imagine. I mean, at least one of the two people that are coming up for renewal have already asked last year prior to their, prior to their other renewal, if they could get off the board and I said no. No, please.
Please.
And thank you.
Anyone else?
It only meets, I mean, they meet once a year. And oftentimes, there's nobody that shows up, so it's kind of, yeah, I mean. It's tough to, to continue that type of motivation to be on a board where no one shows and you only meet once a year, so.
And.
It solves a lot of problems.
And the training that's involved.
Right, yep.
Too, so it's kind of hard to get someone of full-time jobs in Madison to be on the board.
Yeah, great point, yeah.
Yes, Phil?
I, I do like Dave's, you know, thoughts and li- the line of thinking, because the government, whether it's at the municipal level or state, can be intimidating. Um, but this is. Tim makes good points, I like the, I like the concept of the certification and Jacob being involved, so with that said, I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Peterson to approve, or, um, yeah.
Approve the.
Approve the.
Nineteen forty dash two two.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kenny. Anything further? Jake, roll call whenever you're ready. Frye?
Aye.
Brunchard?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Gargano?
Brother.
Kenny?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knudsen?
No.
All right, motion carries. Thanks for the good conversation on that. Uh, number two is approved deny second reading in public hearing for ordinance nineteen forty one dash twenty two. Amending chapter one oh four to identify time limits for public comments, Tim?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this was brought up, uh, three years ago for the first reading. Again, this just codifies the, uh, current policy that we have for three minutes, um, Derek, I thought it would be a good idea if we added an ordinance department. Um, it doesn't, um, it doesn't apply to people who are here for presentations. It doesn't apply to you guys. Uh, it does apply to just, uh, public comments on different topics. And there is the ability for that to be waived by two-thirds of one of the present members to extend that time, so I guess I'll take any questions for that.
Questions for Tim?
Just for the subject matter, correct, Tim?
Correct. And then this does mimic, um, Saw counties and the school districts.
Time?
Except we do not require sign-ins or descriptions of what you are going to talk about in advance.
Tim, when you said that there, there could be a waiver, would that, is that waiver need to be addressed prior to somebody talking or they could get into it and say, I would like some more time?
That's a great question, Eric, what do you think?
I would think you'd want to do it right up front, if you anticipate that this is going to be a big topic or a number of people and they're probably not going to be able to get it in in time. I would do it up front so that everybody gets it as opposed to, to say something, then find out on the third, so can I come back and start over?
Okay.
So, yeah.
I can think of a great example of that, like at Plan Commission, we've had it where a neighborhood would come and, um, they would elect one spokesperson to speak for all of them.
Yeah.
I could see where I would want to have, let them know waivers to talk longer, yeah.
Right, okay, thank you.
Anything else before we take public hearing? I will now open up public hearing, is anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty one dash twenty two? Yes? Could we have your name and your address, please?
Uh, I'm Matt Bushweiler and it's in the city of Ritter.
Perfect.
Um, the way the ordinance is actually written would be considered unconstitutional. Uh, the constitutional issue, issue lies, uh, with the fact that, uh, the two-thirds vote. Um, that would subject, um. Okay, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Uh. Uh, council members, uh, would violate the First Amendment if they allowed speakers whom they agreed with or did not, or if they did not agree. Uh, to speak for, let's say, a full fifteen minutes. But allow speakers who they did not agree with to speak with for only five minutes. So if a council person has a view already on a subject, um, and they decide to not vote. To extend a person's time but allow another individual's time to be extended, that is a constitutional violation. Um, and that would subject the city and officials to a federal eighteen US two forty two suit. Um. The. You know, court, this is, courts have also been wary of laws, ordinances, policies or regulations that prohibit. You know, any, this is criticism, personal attacks, you know, against government officials. A federal district court invalidated a government agency's bylaw that prohibited people at many meetings. From criticizing government employees and or. It's, uh, having time constraints on certain individuals. The court wrote, it seems clear that the bylaw prohibition on criticizing employees and time constraints is, could be considered also a content-based regulation. It is equally clear that the government's concerns and interest, interest in prescribing public commentary cannot outweigh the public's fundamental right. To engage in robust public disclosure on government issues. So that's my.
Right, thank you.
Very much.
Derek, what do you?
Anything with?
Again, that's just, is input, um, all I'm going to say is that this is allowed by a procedure, it's allowed, in fact, it's followed by many municipalities. Um, and as Tim pointed out, we're not requiring people to have to disclose the content. Uh, we're not restricting individuals from speaking about a certain topic, it's a time-based, uh. Only. Um, and so I find the ordinance is appropriate, it's content neutral. And, um, it's consistent with, uh, the local government education packet I think you all received. And there's numerous others that I've reviewed, because that certainly is a concern, and so we're not looking to limit what can be said, we're just trying to limit the amount of time procedurally, okay? And you guys can extend it if you need to, so.
It does talk about persons, not person, so. Either the three minutes applies to everyone or it applies to no one. If you grant fifteen minutes, then you have to grant it to the persons talking about this, or the three minutes to the persons talking about whatever the topic is, so.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty one dash twenty two? Final call, anyone in the audience wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty one dash twenty two? Hearing no one, I'll close public hearing, take it back to the council, discussion. Comments?
Comment?
Yes, go ahead, Jake.
I've had occasion to speak to other councils in the past and I have been in both scenarios where the timeline and the registration was required. Um, subject matter was required, timeline was, was. In place. Um, and I've been in both situations where I've been in mid-thought, mid-sentence and then cut off.
Yeah.
And I have been in other situations where the clock is at three minutes and the mid-thought has been allowed to be at least completed and then cut off.
That's happened quite a bit here already too.
Right.
Yeah.
Um. Generally in our audiences, we don't have a situation where we have a number of people lined up to speak on any one subject. And we haven't for a long, long time. Um, it really only ever applies if you have some sort of a subject that the house is full and you have to limit it. And from my perspective and his perspective only, is that it stops. Someone from hearing a thought by someone else in the audience and then coming back up to the microphone and speak for another period of time. And then going back and sitting down and then having them come up and try to speak again and again and again and again. Um, beating the dead horse often. It, it's procedural. I, I, I agree with Derek, it's, it's something that. Um, keeps regular order, it's meant to keep, help keep regular order and. I don't believe that it's. I hear what Matt says there, but, um, I agree that. It's not a bad thing.
Anyone else? Go.
I would agree with Dave that, you know, we are pretty, uh. You know, we're not heavy-handed in what the people are going to speak about. And as Dave says, when we do have a lot of people here, then it does need to be time managed, we don't want to get into the, some of the silly situations where we have like the filibusters you see on the news in Congress. Where somebody's reading the encyclopedia for the day. But for Matt's concern about somebody being in favor of one person and not the other, I do like the language that says, if we're going to expand the time limit. It's going to, it can be expanded for everybody, and I think that that's, that's fair. You know, as Dave mentioned, we don't have a lot of. Issues where we get a, you know, a lot of public input, but someday we will. And I think having that ability to go beyond the three-minute thing, if it's a, if it's a very in-depth thing and make that across the board for all the speakers, I think that is adequate.
Totally agree. Anyone else?
To just be clear, it's, this will be, so if the presenter is here to present, um, like a developer's agreement or something, they're not included. It's just anyone who would comment about that agreement, yeah, okay, perfect.
Anyone else will take a motion? If one's in order.
Mr. Preem, nineteen forty one dash twenty two.
Motion by Gargano to approve ordinance nineteen forty one dash twenty two, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schulte. Anything further? Jake, roll call, roll call whenever you're ready. Frye?
Aye.
Brunchard?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Gargano?
Brother.
Kenny?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, number three is approved deny second reading in public hearing on ordinance nineteen forty two dash twenty two. Amending chapter one ninety nine to remove references to amusement games and devices from certain subsections, Jake?
We talked about this at the last meeting as well, or two meetings ago rather. Um, so this is basically getting rid of the amusement licenses that the city does not provide anyway, because of recommendation from DOR that they're not really enforceable. So.
I'm so long-sighted.
Sure.
There it is in a nutshell.
That's it.
Any questions for Jake, for Jake public hearing? I now open up public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty two dash twenty two? Anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty two dash twenty two? Final call, anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen forty two dash twenty two? Hearing no one, I'll close public hearing, take it back to council for discussion, I'll take a motion of ones in order.
Move to approve ordinance nineteen forty. Two dash twenty two.
Motion by Schulte?
Second.
Seconded by Brunchard. Anything further before we take roll call? Jake, whenever you're ready. Frye?
Aye.
Brunchard?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Gargano?
Brother.
Kenny?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
All right, number four for the evening is approved deny resolution forty four seventy eight dash twenty two recommending improvements to the intersection of Golf Course Road and East Main Street. Steve?
Are you in it? Uh, this has come up, uh, the DOT is asking. Uh, for recommendation from the city that we prefer a traffic signal at this intersection instead of a roundabout. And we've talked about it at Public Works a few times and it's been talked about here a little bit too, but, um. We'd like to do this as an official, that we request that we do a traffic signal. It would be put in by the city, be owned by the city, maintained by the city. Um, traffic, uh, roundabouts about four times the cost of, uh, for the capital cost than a signal. So when we looked at this, and they're doing a traffic impact analysis currently, and part of that is they have to. Tell the DOT that their preferred method for traffic control is, is the signal besides a roundabout, so. And everyone knows that the hotel going up and industrial park, um, you know, there's going to be a lot more traffic out there and pedestrians also.
Yeah, we weren't convinced that pedestrians can safely cross, uh, four-lane highway with a roundabout.
The roundabout?
Safely as they came with a traffic light, so.
Right.
Is there any concern of backup traffic?
They're, they're doing the.
Coming over that hill?
They're doing the, the traffic, that's what the analysis will do, like when they did the. And then they look at the signal timing, we did the same thing we did the light, Viking and A Street. To, you know, you need left arrows, you need the timing of the signals so they don't get backed up too far. And that will get, going, coming into town out, that speed limit will be reduced. Cause that's going to be.
It will be smoothed out.
It's going to be curb and gutter all the way down to one thirty six, and then one thirty six is getting a roundabout. So that's going to slow people down.
Sure.
Yeah, that's going to look a lot different, they don't look approved, for sure.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Any comments or I'll take a motion if one's in order?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brunchard?
Second.
Seconded by Kenny. Anything further? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is approved deny agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to, to provide basic maintenance for the proposed roundabout at Highway one thirty six and East Main Street.
Tim?
Okay, funny story, um, with the townships. So, as you know, and Steve just brought up again, that they're going to be installing the, um, the roundabout one thirty six and East Main Street. That's actually the part of City Old Road, because we purchased it last year in the township of Greensburg and partially Excelsior. So part of when the state does these improvements, they require that the local municipalities provide a maintenance plan for what that they, they installed. So they went to both the town of Greensburg and the town of Excelsior and said, hey, just so you realize, the blue sections for the town of Greensburg are your responsibilities and the red sections for the town of Excelsior are your responsibilities. We need to sign an agreement that says that you'll take care of it. Both the towns said, sorry, we're broke, we can't afford to do any of that. So they said, call the city. Which they always say. So they did it and, um, we reevaluated with this with, uh, with Matt and with Steve. Um, the idea is that the city is growing in that direction. If the state can't get a commitment from municipality to provide maintenance in those areas, they will not install it. So rather than us having to install those in the next five, ten, whatever years. We agreed that we would go ahead and take care of the snow removal in the blue sections. And potentially move lawn, if there's lawn out there to move that's within that, um, between the blue and the green sections there, that's all that they're requiring. They, um. The agreement that's in your package is a little different than what they just sent me today, because they, um. Removed, uh. The responsibility of the lighting, uh, stormwater and curb and gutter from us back to the state and now the county, because they contract with the county. So literally, the only thing we're taking care of are the blue line and a little bit of grass that's in there. Steve thought that they could handle that, because by the time this goes in, it's going to dry and we'll also be in, and we'll be plowing that to the south anyway, so we'll have trucks up in there. So they're asking for, um, authorization to sign the state municipal maintenance agreement to take care of it.
Tim, just for clarification, those blue and red areas, they signify sidewalks, correct?
Correct, definitely.
And that's it?
That, that's all it is, and that's what they told me is that what you have is bicyclists, and never to avoid the congestion that could have possibly occur in a roundabout. You know, drive off onto the sidewalks and go around the roundabout that way.
There's quite a bit of bicycle traffic, for sure, on thirty three. Any other questions for Tim? I'll take a motion if one's in order.
Move to approve the agreement with the DOT and us and.
Motion.
Sidewalk maintenance.
Second, seconded by Knudsen, anything further? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now for the one everyone's been waiting for. From Public Works, approved deny resolution forty four seventy seven dash twenty two confirming the review of the wastewater treatment plants, C Mar, compliance, maintenance and a report. Steve, I was just thinking, well, this is my, being in order, my sixteenth time hearing this.
It keeps getting better though, yeah.
Great.
The grades were pretty bad, at first they're really getting good now.
I'll just go over it real quick.
Thanks, Steve.
Um. Tim's excited about it.
Get to the grades for sure, we got to hear a little.
Well, we all know the influence flow on loadings is the grade F, because we have too much coming into the plant.
Yeah.
Um, but the F one, which is what we control. Uh, EOD, an A, suspended solids an A, ammonia an A, phosphorus, we got a C, because we got two months. If I look, it's one, and we're like one point. O, o two and one point four, so we got docked.
Bin for that.
Bin for two months. Uh, and there's a roaming procedure too that. Well, Chris can tell you that, but we did get docked, so. We got a, the F, uh, biosolids, which is the final waste that we spread on the fields. We gotta, the F, uh, bio solids, which is the final waste that we spread on the fields. That was an A. Staffing is an A. Operator certification. Uh, pretty much everyone has their, most they can get for certification except. Uh, the last guy we hired and he's, this year he'll have his class four, what they used to call it, quite great, grade four. Certification, management. Thanks to Jacob, we got an A. And then the collection system. That just looks at, you know, how often you clean the sewers. You know, keeping the records and things like that, we got an A with that also. So the final G, final grade point is three point five one. So. It's a GPA. We passed.
That's almost, that's honorable for sure. Means that's. Any questions for Steve on C Mar? Do you have any more for that or?
No, I might just need the resolution, you know, if this goes to the D R.
Yep.
I'd like to make a comment here, Honorable.
Yeah, absolutely, Dave.
I'd like to congratulate Steve and, uh, Chris, Chris and the guys down at the wastewater treatment plant because. As you said, we've been at this a long time and this is a good report considering, especially considering the amount of flow that the plant is taking in. And the fabulous job that those guys are doing down there to keep us as close to in compliance as they possibly can. They're, they're doing a phenomenal job and deserve a lot of kudos for doing so because it's. Uh, it's a good job for Steve. Yeah, and it's, it's an awfully tough job. It, it's, uh. Getting it from a lot of different angles in order to make that happen and, and, um. Looking forward to the new, the plant so that the flows, we can get an A there too, so.
You're gonna four point oh.
Yeah, exactly.
Will that be in the form of a motion, Dave?
That will be in the form of a motion.
A motion by Knudsen. Second. Seconded by Gargano. Anything further? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Steve? Uh, commission committee board and staff reports, historic preservation.
I'm just going to announce that the state did approve our certified local government, um, application. It'll now go to the federal level to be approved, and if that goes through, we will be certified local government. Uh, that can apply for a grant to have a citywide, um, evaluation of our historical properties, which is what we've been working towards. It hasn't been done since eighty four, so it's long overdue and well needed.
Absolutely. First step, check.
Yeah.
Uh, Ambles Commission. Adam, go ahead.
Uh, updated our bylaws, just the minor tweaks, things that needed to be changed, they haven't been changed in the last twenty or thirty years. Uh, reviewing updates on the building expansion, and we've got our budget committee coming up in a couple weeks, so we'll get some new numbers for you for that.
My first meeting back on the Ambles Commission, I want to say thank you for hopping on the budget committee, that was, that's good, good stuff. And then moving along, like you said, with their addition project and getting numbers kind of finalized on that, so. All right, Reesburg area development. Airport Commission.
Uh, we met to talk about the master plan a little bit and to also consider some snow removal equipment. So, make it work a little better.
Very good. Library Board.
Library Board met, we, we tweaked a few policy things. Uh, some programs are well underway, so be sure to check the website for, uh, some in person programs as well as, uh, meeting programs for both children and adults. And we came to an agreement with the A D C I for our space needs assessment study that we're gonna start working on now.
Busy time over the library too, for sure. It's always busy. Um, any other committee, commission, staff, or anything they want to report? Office of the Mayor, do have a couple things we want to talk about tonight. First things first is Barter Fest this week, make sure you get up and, uh, get your Limes burger, Tim, you're serving what night?
Devil night.
Devil night.
Fast and Furious.
I'm gonna miss you in the past.
Plenty of other people are gonna be helping out with that as well. Um, make sure you get a couple Lime burgers for sure.
Absolutely, stop by and say hi. Uh, plenty of stuff going on up there for that, so I see the carnival starting to get ready to be set up tomorrow, so usually stormed at least once while they're either setting up or set up, so. Um, this, maybe this year's gonna be hot, but, um, always a good time and, uh, make sure you get the, uh, the kids up there to have some fun. Um, next thing on my list is the United Fund Brot Bashar Dash, which is next Friday, the twenty fourth. From ten AM to six PM at Quillens parking lot. Um, they're going to be four dollars a piece and or, um, twenty dollars for six brats. And we will be offering delivery, uh, from ten AM to one PM, orders of twenty four brats or more. Um, need a phone ahead at five two four four five three three at Quillens to put those orders in. Um, if you're looking to volunteer that day, we do have some open slots from the four to six timeframe, um, if you're looking to help out with that, so. Um, if you're looking to volunteer, just get ahold of me, um, and I can, uh, get you lined up with that. And then last but not least, um, Freedom Fest will be over with by the time we meet next, so. Um, Freedom Fest is on the fourth of July, we have, um, great food vendors gonna be there again this year. Uh, we have a couple of great bands, one everyone knows, the one not so much, Kelly Line is a new up and coming, um, they play eighties rock, a lot of, um, uh, country. Um, looking forward to them, I've heard a few videos of theirs and, uh, they play really well. And second, the main headliner this year, Back by Property Man is Cougar Wagon. Um, they're gonna be playing in about three, three and a half hours, so, um, they're pumped, they're actually ecstatic to be there. We got some, some professional stage, um, lights, the whole nine yards coming back like we did last year. Um, plenty of food vendors, knew this year we're gonna have, uh, some arts and crafts and, um, at home based vendors as well. Um, and there'll be a Reds, um, Kedno, we're at the Reesburg Pirates baseball game that day as well. Um, bank tournament is going on that day as well. Um, so something for everyone, it starts about three o'clock and obviously goes until after the last boom in the sky, so. Um, I'm always looking for help there too as well, get ahold of me if you want to help us out that day. Uh, we're a committee about three strong, so, um, there's not a lot of planning beforehand, but that day there's always some stuff to do, so. Reach out to me, um, if you're looking to help out with that as well. We'll go around the horseshoe before, before we go to a full session. Dave Knudsen?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Your Honor.
Phil Peterson?
Nothing, thanks.
Miss you, Friends?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Adam Kenny?
Nothing tonight.
Derek Orkin?
Uh, just wanted to say the passing of Judge John Romer, uh, just want to let you know, he was a great person.
Excellent judge, and, uh, that's a big loss, even though he is retired, uh, he was a major community person.
And then there's a lot of us attorneys in Sauk County and other areas that have worked with the judge and, uh, that's a big loss, so.
True tragedy. Jake?
Tim? Just a quick reminder, we are, um, in the beginning stages of the twenty twenty three budget. So, um, you'll see the C I P and C E P first, so if there's any questions, concerns, additions, requests that you may have for the upcoming budget. Please email me as soon as you can.
It's the season.
Yep.
Mike Gargano?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jason Schulte?
Nothing tonight.
Craig Bruncher?
Nothing tonight.
Derek Fry?
Nothing, Your Honor.
One time and again, you'll be retired, so congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I got a phrase I gotta read here, I need to that page. We're gonna go to full session. Per section nineteen point eight five sub one sub E of the Wisconsin statutes, the common council will consider entering full session. For the purpose of deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds. Or conducting out of specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a full session. Specifically related to projects requiring incremental financing for a potential development agreement. In tid eight and tid nine and the potential financial investment in a project requiring the creation of tid eleven. The council received or return to open session to make decisions related to full session. Discussion specifically in approval, denial of the development agreement if appropriate. I'll take a motion to go to full session.
Sure, move.
Motion by Gargano.
Second.
Seconded by Kenny. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening, take a couple minutes before we go.